I'd like to call the former the regular King of the Ogan PD Schools Board of Education on Monday, the 18th of December. Please rise to the seat in a moment of silence.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will Dolph, please?
William Brady?
Here.
Michael Clark?
Here.
John Highstreet?
Here.
Andy Blin? John McVayker here. Nicole Emery?
Here.
James Vasco?
Here.
Thank you. Moving right along, first thing on the agenda is our consent agenda item, so I'm going to have to make a motion.
To make a motion that the Board of Education approves all consent agenda items, including agenda minutes, personnel items, structure reports and bills, and consider items A through C. Support.
Who doesn't support it? Any questions? Comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Information item 5A, NEOL policy updates. It's our second reading.
Yep, second reading. And like I said, a lot of those were just verbiage changes. And then we had the one on the artificial intelligence one. But they did a fine job with that one. It was well worded. I think it gives the teacher some latitude in how you use it in the classroom and appropriate use of it. At the same point, doesn't lock out our kids from possible benefits of it. So that was the only one on there that I think would have had any questions. The rest were offered. It was a short, short step this time, so it'll be in the action items for action.
That's all. 5B is our proposed date for the organizational meeting on Monday, January 8th at 6:00 PM. Does that still work?
I forgot to check, but yeah.
Be there, be square.
Six o'clock?
Six.
Six o'clock, yep. Administrative reports. Mr. Melrose.
Yep, well, just with the holiday season here, it was nice last Friday. We, our middle schools had their first program. They had a matinee at the elementary, then they had an evening performance, their Holly Jolly Juke Box. Kids did a great job. Kids were very enthusiastic. They had a lot of fun. Every morning when I've gone by, first hour to check on them, they were really excited about it. And they were, and even here to listen to other kids, they're excited about this program going forward in the future. But it was a lot of fun. Kids had a great time. And so just a big thanks for Mrs. Mahala and those kids. Also this week, we have band concert on Wednesday, we have choir concert on Thursday, we have a holiday spirit week all week this week. And then we also have in the library here on Wednesday, the winter art showcase. It goes from 6:00 to 9:00 here. Mrs. Guzak's leading that. And then really, just this weekend open, but primarily most of the teachers are doing the NWA testing for the winter session. That'll be when we come back from break. It is somewhat due this week, but it probably mostly will be next week, or when we come back.
This is the statement.
Hi. We've had a lot going on in the past three weeks since we were here last. We, our PTA posted the Christmas craft show bazaar. There was a lot of fun, a lot of homemade gifts, and things have stayed reasonably priced throughout all these years. So that was a great time. This week, we're in Millside and Ogan Quinn are in Spirit Week. So each day is a different holiday theme, and today was just Christmas colors and tomorrow's ugly sweater and those things, just to kind of make it a little bit more fun ending the week. Student council did a great job with pancakes with Santa. I just really liked that event because families could come and get a picture for free with Santa. You know, they can take it on their cell phone instead of having to wait all afternoon at the mall and then pay an arm and a leg for it. So that was a success. My sixth grade performing arts class also did Holly Jolly Juke Box, and the auditorium sounded great. It was a world of difference. So thank you for getting that project underway and completed just in the right time. Third and fourth graders, they also did their music concert for Christmas, and that was well attended. Our student council just concluded today a canned food drive. They'll be stocking or giving it to the organization, Heather's Club, that stacks the blessing boxes. And Ogan Quinn collected over 4,000 different canned goods and non-perishable food items. So that was a huge success. Muskrat All-Stars, our fifth and sixth graders traveled to the New Brink last week for their reward trip for the students who have all As and Bs and excellent citizenship. And this week, we're going to close out our week with popcorn and pajama day. We're looking forward to that. I'm also going to do Mrs. Hanner's report because she's homesick tonight. At Millside, they are having Santa and Mrs. Claus on Friday for the students. Five teachers are halfway through letters training, and I talked a little bit about that last month. And it's super intensive training, and I have about five to 10 at my school doing them, and it's equivalent to a master's course in reading. So it's, it's a lot, a lot of work and a lot of extra time on their own, but it's pretty important, and it's really like gaining a lot of, a lot of strength. Also, kindergartners are beginning to actually read independently their own small books, so they're very proud of themselves, and it's pretty exciting. On the curriculum side, the ELA committee met on December 11th for a Zoom meeting with the representatives and trainers for Amplify. We started getting a bunch of materials in already and looking through them. They look really great. The online resources look pretty strong, too. We're going to be having another PD day for our pilot teachers in January. And then starting the new semester, we'll have one teacher per grade level piloting the full program. So we're looking forward to that.
Thank you. Mrs. Buzell?
So we had our Christmas concert last week, and as always, it was super cute and a great turnout with families. The auditorium was completely full. We have a couple of visitors this week. Santa's stopping by tomorrow to say hello to each of our classrooms, and Olaf, Dr. Brady, is coming Wednesday to read a book. We also have our Christmas Spirit Week this week, and a lot of classroom celebrations going on. Thursday, we are delivering the gifts to our adopted families, so we've been busy wrapping and preparing for that.
Thank you. Board reports. We have, I'll get us started with, we have the final version of the board's code of conduct and operating procedures that the team has worked on. And I think this is the final, final version that's got everything in it. It's got the news since we met last is the calendar, the timeline that Janet had provided. It's in there, so that way you can look ahead and see what, what happens every month. We've got a signature page for all of us to kind of ceremonially agree to it. And I guess maybe I would like to just thank the committee that came together to put this together. Janice and Nicole and Jen. So I think this is good for the board. And I also thank, maybe while I'm still talking, thank the board for coming together, because I think it was really healthy for us, just, you know, coming together. We don't get a lot of opportunities to work on stuff like that and put our cards on the table.
It's a screw up.
Yeah, we didn't have any. It was good, so thank you.
Make good discussions.
Yeah, so that's good. That was excellent.
I just wanted to remind everybody that February 22nd is the general membership meeting at RISA.
Six o'clock, yeah?
Um, she hasn't set a time, but I think it's usually at six. And then right after is the tour.
What was that again?
Twenty-second.
Is that culinary or feasting?
They, yeah.
MESB, Jennifer Smith from MESB should be there in person as long as the weather is good. And then all the directors from these.
The last thing, I've started by signing this page. I'm going to pass it this way. And you can sign it past Andy, and then I'll spread it back.
I just want to real quick say about ELA. I said it on the ELA, the launch, the meeting. And there are plenty of supports for them when they do their piloting, so they're going to get every possible question answered, and they can really deep dive into whether it's right for our school.
Anything else? All right, Ms. Will Dolph?
Yep, just a couple items for you. Sent you the email regarding the true package of policies, and that was the update. And I told you, I looked through it, and they did a great job of handling the verbiage on the new career of their subjects, the bargaining, which, you know, it's, it's going to be a big, big thing. It's changed this year, so in our district, it will be, you know, to me, it's very important that we have policies that back up how we want to approach things. And I strongly suggest that we take a real hard look at purchasing that. It's a, because we're on retainer with Trune, it's a $900 purchase, but well worth it. They'll walk us through, it'll take a day for me to sit down with the attorney from Trune, but he'll walk us through side by side, show us how to incorporate Trune policy into the NEOL part cut out. Like I said at the end of the day, it's, it's going to protect us as a district as well, so I think it's a well worthwhile.
Since, I'm assuming Trune is very familiar with NEOL policies, so they come in and they know the areas where they're at in value right now.
Exactly.
Jennifer and I actually went to a class with the Trune lawyer who was actually bringing up that theory, that theory of the point of the new, the law change. So they're very well versed, and they were very determined that we get things down the right way and that they would work with NEOL, and just to make sure it gets done. We were really confident in them, so.
I think it's, I think it's a wise move for us. If indeed we're going to go in that direction, I will contact Trune tomorrow, because we're kind of out of timeline with that. I will send you their policies the very day I get them, which hopefully will be, it'll be electronic, so hopefully you guys will have those in your hands early this week for a first reading at our organizational meeting would be my thought. And then we could do a second reading at the regular meeting in January. Just wanted to let you, I had a couple, a couple people had asked about communication with coaches when they go out or the people that go out on field trips and how we get in touch with these people if indeed, you know, some, some teachers do not want to put out their cell phone number, get to travel with the kids after hours. And what I did was I put a little thought into this and thought, you know, if we had a way, and so that we don't want to use your phone, what can I give them? What, what can I provide for them so people can still get in touch with them? So we purchased three cell phones, three lines, and taught to the principals, taught to athletic director Mitch Landr, a little bit about this, just so it's something that they have. And we discussed it this morning at our admin meeting, and even thought when we go to hand out permissions, right at the bottom would be that information, that particular cell phone number. That way, if anybody, you know, emergency happened or somebody needed to get in touch with whoever's the chaperone on the trip, they'll have access to them right there. And like I said, probably 95% of our coaches just prefer to use their own personal ones, what they're familiar with. But this would be our backup in case we need to get them onto people. So those are available, they're in the hands of the principals at this point, so should be, help us with that communication gap a little bit. The last thing, and we're in the process of still rolling this out a little bit. Our insurance provider, SETSEC, is very worried about internet threats and being pirated and with all, schools are pretty easy targets right now. And, you know, it's, it's scary because our kids' information's out there, our family's information out there, and it's, it's really scary. They're getting to the point where if we don't start taking certain precautions, they're not going to cover school districts, because when they're holding these people ransom, they're holding, it's millions and millions of dollars that they're asking for. So one, the first step, and you know, there's certain precautions we can take as a district, you know, passwords, you know, complex a little bit more, but multi-factor is a, is a big deal right now. If you go into your banks, you probably do it every time, they send you a code or whatever the case is. So right now, we are, Evan has been working on how we're going to roll that out. We're working through a few bugs in case people don't have a cell phone, don't have, bring their cell phone to school on how they still can get into their computer. But it's become the norm. It's a little bit, you know, it's a little bit of an inconvenience, obviously, but at the same point, security is. We need to make sure we're still going to get covered by the people that need to cover us, because like I said, you start going into some of these, I mean, like I said, it's millions and millions of dollars, and they're not going to, they're not going to cover it anymore unless you're doing some of the things they're asking.
Is there something that RISA does that, because, you know, everybody, districts in the county are all connected in through the RISA network. Is there something that, that they have or, and what we want to have enhances that? Or is it, is it something that individual districts have to have, whether RISA has it or not?
Yes, it would have to be your individual. And because when we log in, Andy, we still log into our system, we don't actually log in. I mean, they oversee the, they're the big umbrella on it, but we actually log into our own system, so. But it's pretty common across the board, and it'll take a little bit of getting used to for some of the teachers that are used to just popping in their password and going to group, but.
Is there, does RISA or somebody provide any kind of training, like, or your staff to be like, this is what efficient email, you should look at, you know, your fonts and, you know, like, like what to look for, because that's the easiest way in for these, or, you know, your staff just, you know?
Yeah, or externally mailed answers.
Yeah, and, and, you know, the different things. So is there any kind of training?
They, they send some stuff out there, some trainings, but they send reminders out for us to forward to staff and some of those, you know, it's getting everybody to pay attention to what those things say is the key, so. But it's scary. Like I said, you, you've got to be pretty diligent in that, because, you know, there's a lot at stake there for families and our kids, so I want to make sure that's protected. And.
Next up is visitor and requests. We've got a handful tonight, so it might be a record for us. I got a few questions after last month's meeting, and I just want to take a minute to kind of clarify for anyone on camera or any of those folks joining us. First, thank you for joining us and sharing your thoughts. We really do appreciate this, our time to hear from you, and it's your time to address the board as well. And we appreciate that. There's a blue sheet that everyone fills out. I think everyone here tonight knows how that works. Blue sheet calls out a few details, but just again, for those on camera who might be wondering at home, you know, how it really works, a couple of details from there is, like I mentioned, it's, this is the public's opportunity to speak to the board, to be heard and have us hear them. And in turn, it's the board's opportunity to really listen and understand the perspectives, right? It's how it works. It's not really intended for the board to go back and forth, for back and forth dialogue and things like that. There might be a scenario where, say, myself in the role of board president, or maybe Al as superintendent, would ask a clarifying question or something like that, if we wanted to better seek to understand, better understand your perspective. But for the most part, you know, it's, thank you for the feedback. Well, listen, if, if there are questions that are posed to the board, that's fine, too. Often, it would be, yeah, followed up afterwards by staff, either by Al or one of the administrators, things like that. And we're, we're pretty good about trying to do that. Also, if there's something that came out of like last month, and Al will look to weave it in in his talking, his superintendent's report the following month as a way of following up, too, if there's open questions. So just wanted to explain that a little bit. We do, we have a lot tonight. We asked people to state about five minutes for, our policy says we have 30 minutes allocated, and I believe we have just as many forms filled out as 30 minutes. So if we stick to five minutes, I think we'll be fine, assuming I don't go too much longer here. And then last is just a quick, you know, reminder to, to, to speakers, your words are your words. So I just want to remind everyone that anything you say, it's, you know, it's your words and actions, not the district's necessarily. All at that, who do you have first?
Mr. Babson.
Uh, Mr. Babson.
How's everybody doing? My name is Jesse Babson. Last month, I spoke to you guys about Ricky Turner. This month, I want to start with, I did make one statement, my statement, that I stated that when Ricky Turner, or when I was leaving the room, Ricky Turner saying, "Have a nice day." That turned out that it wasn't Ricky Turner, that it turned out to be a student. So with that being said, I'll touch on that again in a minute. Social media, I've got a couple of social media posts that have kind of bothered me because this is putting on an image that I'm overly aggressive, big bad dad, come Maryland into a classroom that I don't, I don't appreciate. One of, one of these posts comes in and says that he failed to mention that he came into our classroom and was verbally yelling in front of the children to the point where the kids thought he was going to hit the teacher. Been in this district for quite a while, and I've worked with quite a few of you, and I can never think of a time that that would even be remotely true, even, even come to that point. If somebody's intimidated because somebody's talking to them pointedly and it's a serious discussion, I can't, I can't change that. That's, that's immune. There's a time for business, there's a time for joking around. So that, that was one statement that really bothered me. Each one of you should have these comments in front of you. The next one's going to be Ricky Turner's account of what happened. And my issue with that is, most everything, most, most what we say together aligns from my statement to her statement. And it focuses a lot on the first half, the first part of this interaction, which was the communication, how I feel that's inappropriate for teachers, staff to have control of our children when we can't reach them, or when we're told to email them. That's not going to change. And you took a great step in handling it, and that's as far as it should have went. I sent an email, that should have been the end of it. That was it. Then it would have been, everybody would walk away happy. So that's not the problem. The problem is, so this is all, but I've highlighted in here, the areas, in her account, the conversation she says that we had, she's fluffing up, she's exaggerating, she's, she's added all this, this talk in there that just never happened. I'm not an unreasonable person. If I'm having a conversation and you're telling me your side, I'm telling you my side, and we come to a common ground, that's just what we do. That's because we're adults and we're professionals. So I've highlighted the statements in here that this aren't true. So the statement ends with, "The kids were so afraid that I told a joke to lighten the mood." And I'm sorry, I just don't know where the joke in, where the joke lies there in telling students that, making a reference to a small pee pee, cornering kids in the bathroom, being a pedophile. I, I just don't see where that's comical in any way. So the problem that I have is the professionalism, the professionalism, the boundaries, structure, the discipline that I've seen, and every teacher that I've ever worked with here. And I was having issues with my son, so that I needed to have a dialogue with this teacher that had control of my son after school hours. I don't think that's unreasonable. I've, I've had to do that in the past, and it's, it's always worked out. Nobody's ever had an issue. But I have this one teacher that just says, "It wasn't urgent, it wasn't as urgent as he claimed, so I didn't have to return the doll." She didn't return anything at all. No, there's no communication. So you can give them a phone, what's going to make them use it? You know? So the, the comment stops at, "The kids were so afraid that I told a joke to lighten the mood." And here we are. This is my problem. It doesn't, she doesn't take any accountability for what happened after. That's the problem. The problem isn't the communication anymore. I'd be honest with you, I'll never try to contact that person again, as I stated before. So moving forward, I got this issue here with all these comments. She's not holding herself accountable, I'm being mad, I've received not even a hint of an apology from, from her. And that's really, that's, that's where this needs to start. She should have been in the meeting that I had so that we could have addressed it, and we could have possibly just found a common ground and walked away. For some reason, she wasn't there. For some reason, you weren't there, Al. And I don't appreciate that. Anytime I've had an issue, we, we talk, we talk through it, and we part ways. That's how I like to do it. So I don't know what was different this time, but here we are. This is where we are now, and it's frustrating. My son read the social media post, and he, this was December 4th, and he's, he wants to make a statement to the board as well. So on that note, I think that's all I got.
Thank you. Okay. Gunner?
Mr. Babson? I'm here regarding the events that took place on October 27th, the day that my father was called a pedophile and the jokes were made. So he walks in and he, he has the conversation that we've all heard and the lies about, but after the conversation was done, I went out and I apologized. I now know that was wrong of me. Me and my father, we were having a feud like he said, but now I'm understanding of it. Me apologizing was not the correct thing to do. Afterwards, we sat down, and to lighten the mood, she did in fact say along the lines of that, that had, my father has a small pee pee energy. And then after that, it was quoted saying, along, she said something about my dad being a pedophile, and multiple people heard it, cornering kids in the bathroom, yelling at them, just doing inappropriate things that people know that he would never do. And then I never said anything about it, because like I said, we were having a feud, and I just believed everything anyone said about him, because I didn't like him at that time, but now I know that was wrong. After this occasion, I did read the social media post. She, on Guy Turner's post, it says alleged she did not call him a pedophile, and there were false claims. They were not, there were multiple accounts of him, of her saying that. And I just wanted to clarify that lie. There was, he did not scream at the kids out of earshot range. He was talking very firmly to Ms. Turner and Ms. Turner only. As the conversation was done, he then walked outside the door, and when he was leaving, the student yelled, "Have a nice day," and he responded, "I always will." And Ms. Turner did no action to put a disciplinary on that child, just a very unprofessional act in her ways, because a student should not be speaking like that to another adult in an unrespectful way. So I was just here, and I'm being very clear that I do like Ms. Turner as a teacher. I do think she's very nice and very respectful to students, at least. So I just wanted to make things clear and help you guys get a slight better understanding of it.
Thank you.
Mrs. Brackett?
Mrs. Brackett?
I would also like you to address the issues with Ms. Turner. Since the last meeting, lots happened. More than 2,000 views of the video lets you know that people are very interested in what's going on. People from other districts are chiming in on social media, asking questions, voicing their opinion, that it's not the kind of attention we want. Mr. Babson's complaints were not only invalid, they were a catalyst for an outpouring of other complaints and concerns. His experience seems to be the tip of the iceberg. When I posted the video of the last meeting on my own personal Facebook page, people didn't hesitate to comment about their negative experiences with Ms. Turner, her bullying, lack of professionalism, lack of attention to the needs of her students, and the frustrations felt by parents and students for her lack of communication and planning. Public comments pale in comparison to those sent to me via messenger. Some of them were heartbreaking. That's why I'm here tonight, as you can see, public speaking is not my thing, but I couldn't not speak up. Not here to talk about Ms. Turner's blatant ethics violations, her lack of boundaries with her students, or the times she shared her personal issues with her classes. Not here to talk about all the times Ms. Turner told her students they were all caught up and the rest of the class was a free period, or the time she had her dog with her and needed the kids to be quiet so Ava wouldn't bark. The class time she wasted projecting dead veto memes on the overhead and taking inappropriate would you rattle quizzes with the kids. Not here to talk about all the kids that have quit band or acquired because Ms. Turner has made fun of their health issues, announcing a tally of their bathroom trips, mocking students with IDPs and telling other kids how annoying they are, targeting students that take outside lessons, gossiping, and taking sides in student relationships. Not here to talk about the students that have been put in counseling. Not here to talk about the students that have been put in counseling because their parents were concerned because of the relentless bullying by Ms. Turner and the students she's chosen to shoulder her teaching responsibilities. In the footnotes, I've added a case from one of three families I've been in contact with that have students who have developed depression, anxiety and suicidal thoughts as a result of Ms. Turner's bullying and bullying from the students that are under pressure to deliver results that Ms. Turner herself should be in charge of. It's not my place to share their stories publicly, but I'm happy to bring you in contact with those families, one of whom has given me permission to share screenshots of our conversation with you. Not even here to complain about the slanderous posts of personal harassment from Ms. Turner's father and stepmother, as Mr. Baxton touched on. Or the parents that have posted about pulling their kids from her programs, some even leaving the district because their complaints have been continually ignored. It's an open secret that she's only here to make money while she finishes graduate school and she talks freely about how much she hates her job. I am here to ask why the administration and the school board aren't talking about these things. They're posted all over social media, people talk. Why doesn't anyone seem to be concerned about plummeting numbers in the music department? According to MichiganSchoolReview.com, 11% of high school students are members of their school's band. We include the eighth grade students that she's pulled up and the members of the color guard that don't even play instruments, but somehow earn a credit and a grade for existing in her band room so that they qualify for MSBOA festivals. Even if we count the extra students she's panned in her band with, we're still at 7%. We used to have a marching band, a symphonic band, a very active pop band, the Tap Road Jazz Society. How has no one noticed that the band has fewer and fewer engagements every year? In the past, our marching band has won state championships, competed at nationals. We had an award-winning drum line. That's what can happen when you have a director that's motivated. These kids work hard, they deserve a director. It's going to work hard too, and a director that's proud to showcase them. Choir is considered the most popular music class among high school students. Nationally, 13% of high school students join their choir. My daughter was in choir. This year, Ms. Turner has managed to retain 11 students. That is 2% of our high school population. The national average is 13. She's retained 2%. Why aren't we asking why that is? I can't imagine the kids just don't like singing anymore. She hasn't been shy about lighting the school's sound system for her choir not being heard. The new system this year, there shouldn't be an issue, though I can't help but think the waiting membership is the real issue. I have to wonder how anyone can look at this declining interest in Ms. Turner's class and think that she's doing her job. Makes me wonder what exactly the criteria is for her annual performance reviews. And one of the things that bothered me the most was the number of people that reached out to me with concerns that didn't seem to be properly handled. There seems to be a disconnect between parent-student complaints and actual disciplinary action. Giving people the option to make anonymous complaints by turning them into the office is a joke. Nobody wants to walk in there to make an anonymous complaint, especially when Ms. Turner is notorious for targeting students that get in her way. When you email a complaint, they're answered with the customary, "Thank you, I will look into it and get back to you." But nothing seems to happen. People are frustrated, people have lost faith that their concerns matter. Student Parent Handbook goes a long way to outline procedure when a student oversteps. It is purposely lacking when it comes to parental and student rights when a school employee oversteps. Protocol for employee discipline is shrouded to complicate any meaningful action on the part of concerned parents. Parents are not aware of the fact that a meeting between them, the administration and the teacher is required. Let's not forget that we're paying Ms. Turner how much a year to systematically destroy our music program and complaints against her don't go followed up? I'm glad to hear about the new cell phones because we send kids on trips, we trust that they're being taken care of. The school's invested in instruments that should be properly maintained and inventoried. There should be guidelines for our band program. There's been a lot of talk lately about the new development going in behind Gulfview and though. Do we really think that new families are looking for a school district with a dying music program and a band director that openly complains about her job? Why other prospective taxpayers want to sustain a music director who, whose heart isn't in it? She neglects her teaching obligations in favor of her graduate school classes. I can't help but think there's a direct correlation between college exam week and the lack of Ms. Turner's preparation for the Christmas shows. Right now, the kids should be polishing their sets, not learning them. Her priorities are not focused on her students, they're focused on herself as always. Algenex Music Program has produced accomplished musicians, composers, industry techs, award-winning choreographers. When Algenex Band alum, I reached out to, has performed at music festivals with the Foo Fighters, Rob Zombie, Green Day, and Alice Cooper, to name a few. He was quick to say that none of that would be possible without his time in our band. Another former AHS drum line member has gone on to teach award-winning students. I'll attach his resume, it's quite impressive. He offered to work with our drum line for free and Ms. Turner left him unread. A former alum spent time as a drum tech on tour with The Temptations, Kid Rock, Lil Jon Roberts and more. He also credits his time with the AHS band for his success. Yet Ms. Turner has students in our band that don't even play instruments. So how can so many students and parents be unhappy with an obviously failing music department and no one seem to know why? How have these issues not been addressed? Are people afraid to speak up? Absolutely. Students know it'll get worse for them, for them. And if people try, but they're met with soothing distraction. The administration doesn't want to actively deal with incompetent teachers that's achieved tenure under their lackadaisical watch. So here we are. I've gathered plenty of information about Ms. Turner, ACS protocol, and illegal ropes that bridge your gaps. I'm happy to meet with Mr. Wittles and the board. I will share the information that I have because something needs to be done about her. These kids deserve better and our community deserves better. Thank you.
Mrs. Brackett, please share anything with Al directly that you had to pass on. Mrs. Turner, Jody Turner?
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I have a lot to say, but I'm sure that I can't fit it all in my 15 minutes here. My name is Jody Turner. I'm Ricky Turner's stepmother. I've known her for about six years and I feel like I know her personality and communication style better than most, as we spent a good share of those six years sharing the same home. Being a stepparent, I don't have the fantasy mentality of her being my blood and me thinking that she's absolutely perfect. We don't see eye to eye on a lot of things. She doesn't know how to fold towels correctly, I'll tell you that. She does not do dishes up to my standard, as much as I've tried. And that was supposed to be humorous and I always ask her why she doesn't laugh when I say something humorous and she usually comes back with, "Well, you're not that funny." So with that being said, the good things I see in Ricky far outweigh any criticism I might have of her. Every time I've had the opportunity to step into her band room and see how she interacts with her students, whether they're practicing or out on the field doing drill instruction, I find myself utterly amazed at her connection with those kids. Utterly amazed. She does something, she has something that I could never dream of and I'm proud of her for that. She loves band, she loves her students and despite what a lot of naysayers from the outside who aren't in her classroom say, her kids love her. I've seen tons, dozens of letters and cards and gifts from previous students thanking her for helping them through their high school years, whether it be home problems or school problems, very heartfelt. I have seen her drive miles to support kids after they leave high school, when they're in their college careers. She's traveled to be there for them, to show the support for them and to show that she's proud of them and she still cares. All of the vile, disgusting gossip, if it had an ounce of truth, I would be ashamed. I would be ashamed. But I hear all the vile things coming out of just a select few of people, people that don't know Ricky. If you had a problem with Ricky, how many of you came to her and said, "I've got a problem"? No. We stand behind our keyboards and we type nasty messages to whoever will learn or will listen. They believe that it's all fact because we wouldn't post anything on the wild web that wasn't a fact. So they jump right on board and think, "Oh my God, this teacher has got to be gotten rid of." Little do they know the outright lies. I can guarantee you as I'm standing here, Ricky Turner never called anyone a pedophile. Never. And I can promise you that. I don't know who did, but I'll tell you that a friend of Mr. Baxton's is the one who enlightened Ricky that he shouldn't even be on the school program, said Algonquin. A friend of his is the one who enlightened Ricky as to that fact. She used to be a friend of this friend as well. And once this friend found out that she couldn't bully Ricky into controlling her band program, she's turned into a nasty little thing. Anything that she can do to undercut Ricky and to make her look embarrassed in front of people, she will do. And she should be ashamed of herself and people see it. So Mr. Baxton, when you're wondering who it is that started the rumors about it, look towards your friends because that's who it came from. And I will reiterate again, "Pedophile" was never a word Ricky would use. Never did she say it. I can guarantee you with 100% certainty, she did not. And I will stand up to anybody who wants to argue that point. I know that girl. I know her. And I can see all of the students that she has helped through these years. And there are just as many letters from students who struggled with things at home that she's helped them through. When they don't have the best home life, she's gone out of her way to do what she can to help them. And you know, as far as anyone knocking the school program for music, it's not Ricky. It is the Algenex School who prioritizes sports over anything in this town. The band doesn't get the recognition from the school that they deserve. You know, there's very few announcements congratulating the band or someone from the school showing up at a band event to back them up. But we're all there for the sports. That's number one and that's a shame. But don't put that on the shoulders of Ricky. She does the best that she can and she fights for everything for that program. There's a few people who carry an axe to grind and will make her life miserable and you should be ashamed of yourself because it's not that it's not going unseen. People know. You may not think that they know, but they do. And shame on all of you for spreading lies that you have no idea about. You are taking one person's word. Shame on you. How would you like it if your children were treated that way? Any lie can be said about them and it's spread throughout social media and people jumping on board thinking that it's the truth? How angry does that make you as a parent to see your child suffer at vile, nasty people? Nasty. Do better, Algenex. And you can sit there and laugh and chuckle, but you should be ashamed of yourself most of all. Thank you.
Mr. Rob Mitchell?
So much to unpack and what we do on both sides. I'd like to put more to say on the computer, pretty simple. Measurements and metrics is what it comes down to, what can I measure? And it's quite simple. I have three things we can actually measure pretty quickly here for the band program. What was our performance at marching band this year? I was there on the ring. It was pathetic. We can measure that year over year and our performance has not been well year over year. What I can say is we have pushed middle schoolers to take on the roles of high school students for performance. This isn't great either. They need their time to practice, understand how to do things and not be thrust out in front of the community immediately. Occasionally, there is that star that deserves that role, but that is fewer and farther between. But frankly, my last measure is, where's our students? It was articulated very clearly earlier, thank you. Very clear that we're losing students year over year and I think we can pull the numbers and we can measure the dropout rate during the year, which probably speaks more volumes because I know of several students over the last few years that have dropped. I'm not going to say what those reasons are, I don't really care. To your point, there are vicious, nasty things that took place on Facebook that I would be embarrassed of as well, but your daughter takes no accountability either for her decisions. So therefore, there's room on both sides of that, which brings me to a word that we all need, humility. But for the grace of God, so do I. Walk a mile in somebody else's shoes. We all have a part to play here. I've been in your office, you've heard my messages. We have to do better. How many times have I stood up here and asked, "Do better"? This is that opportunity. My question to each of you is, how are we going to get a positive outcome out of this? Because I don't know at one at the moment. I shouldn't have to ponder this for the last 20 days of how to, how to address all the things that have took place, other than say, humiliating. If Jesse could have come in and said, "Hey, I was a little worked up, I had a really bad mess, I really had a bad situation, I'd really like to sort this out. I'm sorry, I was excited." I'm sorry. I was excited. What can we do?" And if Ricky could have had the humility to say, "Hey, I'm really sorry that worked out that way. We have a procedure we're working on, or please take it up with my administrative staff. We want to make sure that this doesn't happen again." These are simple, human things that we can do. So my challenge back to each one of you: do better. That's the challenge I have to face every day in my job. How do I do better? So I challenge it back to you. And you ask, well, Rob, what the heck are you so impassioned about band or choir? I'm going to tell you quite simply. I'm a hiring manager. And when all else is equal, I hire the person that knows how to play an instrument over the person that doesn't. Flat out, that is the edge of being in band and playing an instrument. And we're failing our students, because I can't give them that edge. I think that's all I have to say. I have plenty more to say, but I think it's all been covered on both sides. So I challenge both you and you: do better. We're a community. We need to fix this, and we need to fix it quickly now. And we need to be a little more transparent of how we're going to fix this. Thank you.
Dave Allison?
Dave Allison here. I'm a musician. I feel better while I'm so far. I came last month and spoke about some things that presented an opportunity for the school. And then listening to the community here talk about what's going on, it reinforces my thought as an advocate for the community that we're lacking virtue in our society. And that was my point I wanted to make the last time, is we need virtue. I look around at what's going on in society. Obviously, I know it starts in the family. We want the family to support virtue. Then I see educators failing the system because they lack virtue. Hardly a week goes by where I don't read a story in the news where a teacher has sexually violated a student. You know why? Lack of virtue. And so, how do we stop this slippery slope? We have to embrace, endorse virtue. It's important. I look at Officer Dave over here. When, if he should happen to catch someone speeding, he doesn't say, "You violated my constitutional right," because those speeding laws were put in place by some religious folks. Now, it's a virtue that we want, that we support. And so that's why I'm here continually. And I know that you said the last time that this is a policy issue. We can bring it up and talk about it. Well, how are we going to address this? But I'm telling you right now, the majority of the people in the Algenex School District stood up and say, "We're going to support these virtues. We think these are important characteristics that we have in our society." This gentleman said he's a hiring manager. There's virtues that he's looking for. I've been a hiring manager. There's virtues that I'm looking for. I don't look at race, religion, or whatever. Because these virtues that we're talking about, they're pretty much accepted by most folks. But yet, I think we're failing, because we don't endorse and embrace those here in school. That triples right down into places of faith. Kids sit in classrooms five days a week, and these virtues are not endorsed or promoted. And now they go into a place to worship, and they're fighting that, "Hey, you're not tolerant. There's no absolutes. I don't have to... This doesn't apply to me. It applies to you. It doesn't apply to me. It applies to you. It doesn't apply to me." Right? I'm just saying, I think Algenex School District, if they would make it stand, say, "These virtues, we're going to support." I'm not saying you want the kids to recite them every morning, but just start with posting them. And that's an endorsement saying, "These are virtues. They're commandments. They're not suggestions." We made them suggestions. "Thou shall not steal" is now morphed into, "Thou shall not steal more than $900 worth of stuff, or then after that, we're going to arrest you." So see how these things are more... The virtues are lacking. And as the grandparent, parent, grandparent. The reason why you don't see elderly people like me going to schools and causing some kind of turmoil is because they have virtues. Most of the people, young people, are committing these crimes. They're lacking virtue. And I think Algenex School District, my parents, I have a parent that retired who was a school administrator full life. I have a sister. Well, that was a teacher in this school district. But they will both support the idea. They would prefer students have strong virtues, and that will serve them well. We don't want to just give them skills so they can enrich themselves personally, but we want to give them skills so they can enrich our community. So again, I ask you to consider those things and see the value in them, that this whole community would benefit from.
Mrs. Stash?
Thank you, Superintendent Mr. Latosa. I received your letter, and I appreciate you looking into this, as Mr. Allison said, not only on legal grounds, but also to help the community, the students, do better. I was just curious, though I don't know how it works, that it didn't say that you CC'd the other board members. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knows about this letter and that I looked into this organization, that you adopt their policies. We can get back to that when you meet for your policy decisions. But along Mr. Allison's lines, talking about the Ten Commandments, again, recent Supreme Court decisions have said no longer can schools, government institutions discriminate against these type of Christian or religious symbols, Ten Commandments, prayers. But it was interesting that this explanation of the Ten Commandments, they make up a set of principles that are central to many religions, including Christianity, Judaism, and Islam. Supporters of this proposal argue that posting Ten Commandments in classrooms would help instill values such as honesty, respect for authority, and the sanctity of human life. So I don't know what goes on in these schools. I do have a number of friends, family, where students go to the school here. And you know, what is the code of conduct? Is there something posted about being a better human being and being more productive in society, and as the gentleman said, about humility? And do unto others as you would have to do unto you. Oh, it came from the Bible. Okay, so thank you. I will be following up and looking for your response to this. But again, you know, just from a legal standpoint, I mentioned last time that the coach that was fired for praying received a Millard Dowling Award for violation. Thank you.
All right, thank you everyone. Action items, we have our first two action items are for the tuition increases that we discussed at the childcare. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll motion that the Board of Education approve a tuition increase for the Algenex Daycare's infant toddler daycare programs to not exceed $10 a week per student. Support?
Who's supported? Any questions? And all those are still talking points. They're still pretty inexpensive.
Yeah, absolutely.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If that passes. Likewise, preschool and latchkey programs. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approves a tuition increase for the Algenex Child Cares Preschool and Latchkey Programs of 75 cents per hour per student.
Support?
Who's supported? Any other questions on that one? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If that passes. 7B Neola Policy Updates.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approve the Neola Policy Update, Volume 38, Number 1, as presented. A copy of all will be attached to the minutes.
Support? Who's supported? Any questions? All right, thanks as always, Al. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If that passes. And with that, I would like to make a motion that the board go into closed session at 8:10 PM for the purposes of superintendent evaluation.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So for everyone joining us here tonight, we go into closed session to talk through Al's annual review, and then we'll come out of closed session and we'll vote on his review in public. It'll get captured.
Wouldn't it be more fun if we all joined?
No, it's closed session.
You're welcome to grab coffee.